Many easements are permanent preservation and a permanent investment in the future of agricultural, agricultural industry in the county. Zoning, things like, well zoning the tiers under the Septic Phil are, you know, a policy effort that is ephemeral. It can be changed by the next set of commissioners or by the next governors. So it's a temporal kind of restriction role in land use that is not a permanent restriction. It's just not, they're different in kind. And if you really, we believe in permanent preservation of agricultural land. So that, because agriculture doesn't, you know, operate within the swathes of political time, like the two to four year swings in politics are not how people invest in agriculture. If you have to, if you're trying to improve your operation, you've got to put together a financial plan that takes a long time. And knowing that your land is protected or neighboring lands are protected is a critical part of that planning. So we believe in both. We think the Septic Phil is a good step forward, but it in no way does away with the need for farming preservation.
But I, I feel like there might be some unintended consequences that there still is development available in those rural areas and it's going to be one to five lots or, sorry, it could be, there's five lots off of a large portion and they're going to be big lots if they have to sell. So that's going to increase sprawl.
Well, you know, I think the, I think that's a good question for your planners to address, but it doesn't have to be that way. You can, through your subdivision ordinance, can keep lot sizes to a minimum to protect agricultural land. So I guess I respectfully disagree that limiting the number of safer instance south of the canal or as one per 20, limiting that to only five lots per farm can somehow increase the sprawl. I guess I don't understand that.
Well, if they have to sell, how are they going to split up the farm? And that's a gentle look at, and it could very well be, but that to me shows why preservation is still needed.
Absolutely. If you see, if you see some situations, particularly south of the canal where people are getting into a tough spot because of regulations or they have to come and sell, let us know. We've found ways to work easement programs into, we call them critical farm situations. Carroll County actually set up a program to deal with those situations. But we would be happy to make a run using easements or other techniques to try and help out if there are particular situations that you see where there's some unintended consequences.
Yeah, and I think to add on that, you know, I'm a proud son of a shore farming family, so you know, we, what we're doing with our organization, the other thing that we've done recently, sent a copy to our rural jobs summit. So what we do is continue to protect these kinds of rural initiatives passing jobs around. This is the business copy that was the result of what, what our attendees had to say with regard of what, what we can do. Our focus was to put on a summit where we could bring some of the best minds across the entire region and figure out what we can do to make our rural areas strong and increase and stay in those, you know, those agricultural strengths. And we found some interesting, interesting information. I guess the main part of that, that out of all the responses, you know, what things stuck out was that, that there needs to be more of a, more, people think we can have more of a regional vision. And we've, you know, we've, over the years, we've kind of basically had our council theme that basically is government, but it looks to be that, you know, that they want more of a, more of a safer, larger vision of where we're going to be. And there's some other interesting points in there. I don't want to go over too much, take all your time, but please take some time to look at that. It's an interesting result. And just to move on, the other thing that our organization also does, we also have SASSR from Barnland Education Center headed by former Director Muendo Press and, it's in Kent County. And we basically have, it's designed, it has a staff of about, about two and a half. And it's basically what it is, it is designed to help provide environmental literacy, helping just standards, the conference that he wanted to, to study everything, to go in everything from geology to ecology to physics to human history to basically how we develop in the photo world where we are now, with the parts of the bay, our rural heritage. So he's doing a very good job. It's another part within our organization. The other is the Center for Towns.
Yeah, just one quick note on SASSR. So Congressman Muendo, I hope you knew this, but he's been, while he was in Congress, he was doing programs for the homeless shelter down in Cecil Town for years. And that really blossomed into his vision for an environmental education facility there at Turner's Creek. And he's working with Kent, Kent, Queens, and Cecil County school systems to help them meet the environmental literacy requirement. So I know he's been in touch with a number of people in the county. I don't know if it's all a lot to go, but some really great stuff going on there. Encourage you to make a visit there. See Wayne, his new habitat, he puts it in Congress. Anyway, just a quick note about our Center for Towns. So we've done rural land protection for 20 years. In the last few years, you know, we look at that as important work in the, to support agricultural economic development events for all in the rural areas. But at the same time, an important part of what our vision for the shore is that we need thriving, vibrant, small towns where it would be job for, for a kid to be able to stay on the shore. So we started this Center for Towns in an attempt to make our towns more of a magnet for growth instead of a, sort of a wasteland deposit density is how some people call it. You know, don't keep throwing all the density at the towns because, you know, it's going to ruin the towns, but we feel like we can accommodate a lot of growth in our towns if we do it right. And so the Center for Towns is doing a whole number of things. We're creating an 11 acre waterfront park in Easton, Concert and that town government. We are finishing up a pedestrian bike access plan for St. Michael's. We're actually partnering with a whole number of organizations to try to build a conservation center in downtown Easton. We're working with the town center bill to try and build a waterfront presence for that town, try to revitalize their waterfront to the way it used to be as a center of commerce forum. Similarly, we've done visioning exercises in the town of Marydale and East New Market, Marydale, Caroline County, East New Market, Dorchester County, and plan to do another one in Federal'sburg. So these kind of town center activities are all focused on getting communities involved in planning processes. And we always bring in university partnership from prominent landscape architecture or architecture schools. So we've used Philadelphia University, Catholic University, Morgan State, University of Maryland to, a lot of prominent schools are being brought to the shore. The nice thing is it's free labor, free planning, and you know, these kids use this as either graduate project or part of a senior thesis or part of a class-wide project. So we're getting lots of creativity brought into the shore. And it actually seems to be a huge untapped resource to get planning going here on the new shore. So our Center for Towns has been out there for about two years. There's been lots of success thus far. And encourage you to think about us if you see issues. I know you don't have jurisdiction in your municipality, but you work with them to clean municipalities all the time. So keep, keep us in mind if you see problems, we can help solve, whether they're real estate and planning or other types of problems in and around the towns. We're anxious to be of service to you and your constituents out there. Josh.
So basically what we're going to do is we're doing, what we're doing in the organization, and there's few organizations in the entire country that are doing what we do, what we're doing. We're focusing on making the ocean shore special and more special than it already is. And so what we also, within us, we have a lot of great resources. You know, so we're, and in the next year, we're out of the rural jobs summit. Our, our goal was to try to come up with highly impediments to rural, sustainable job growth. So within that, which I played out in that document there, that we wanted to basically bring the best minds together, figure out what is, what is going wrong and how do we fix it at the state level. And we already had the go-ahead from a lot of administrations at the level saying, hey, there's ways we can deregulate and be better, be more efficient. So what we, our goal was to try to put together a rural jobs package. We could go to the state as well as maybe in, you know, a couple of county levels here, figure out ways we can solve problems and then try to go forward from there. So we're still in the process of pulling that together and I will certainly keep abreast of how that, all that turns, how that plays. But basically, we want to be a resource, be the whips or whatever it might be, and we want it to be able to be a resource to all of you. So any way that we can do that, let us know when we're available. Any questions?
Just one comment. Rob, the Cecil County has a mayor's association that needs at least approximately quarterly mayor for summer from Alton, is there a chair person? You might want to contact him.
Yeah, that's a good suggestion.
About doing this presentation there so that they know what resources are available.
Yeah, good, good. Yeah, I apologize. Jake Day is the director of our Center for Towns and just got called up for guard duty. So three days in, we're scrambling a little bit there, but we'll put that on our call list. The Cecil County Mayor's Association. Good to know.
And there is an initiative for a farmers museum. It sounds like you would be in support and you could help them with resources in helping them pull it together.
Yeah, absolutely. Where are they thinking? Cecil County. Yes.
I'll get you a contact on that one.
Okay.
I have a comment, a question, and a favor to ask. Number one is a comment, and that is that I'm glad to see that you're working on this Center for Towns. It seems to me that particularly now the governor's vision is to drive people into the small towns and out of the rural areas and out of preventing sprawl, reducing sprawl, which is a good effort. Obviously, to keep the vibrant and sustainable, the quality of life in town needs to match the quality of life out of town. Otherwise, people will want to be out of town. So really, I hope that you're looking at public safety issues and other things like that to make the quality of life match what people can get outside of town. But I, I realize that the governor wants to drive that growth towards the town centers and have that in the middle and that redevelopment opportunities. And I think it's a great thing because the towns have the infrastructure and they have buildings and they have a lot of things that they can start with. The foundation is there, but we have to match that quality of life. And that, that's a challenge that I think you have to meet that goal. Second is a question. Did I hear someone say that you're working with the regional councils, particularly the Upper Shore Regional Council? And are you working together on some of your goals and objectives?
Yeah, she's the new, she's been on our, we have a rural jobs discussion group which we created before the, our conference in Alabot, keeping going, has, has various individuals from different backgrounds, from DED as well as, you know, all local people that she wanted. And she can create kind of requirements.
That's good, good. And the favor, could you develop a list for me, federal, state, local, and individual ways of preserving easements for preservation? All the resources that you know. Sit down and say yourself, okay, here's all the things that the federal government can offer. Now, not everything will apply to any one property. Every property is unique and only certain programs will work on this property or this property. Could you give me a master list of every known today? And I'm sure that there'll be new efforts and opportunities and programs in the future, but based on what you know today, do develop a list. And I don't need to know all the details and I don't need to know, but just a broad-based list of all the federal, state, local, and obviously there's gifting and there's donations and there's tax credits that individual properties, and make a list of those also, that individual property owners can take the initiative upon themselves without government money to preserve.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Usually we, I, last year I attended one Cecil County, it was a financial power. It was pretty neat. It was, Jay Young there.
Yeah.
Financial player, so he's got a good line for financial, which is called, or to deal with easements. So a lot of people look at that long range, you know, it's like, oh, if someone passes away, but also if the tax bill comes and they have to sell because they didn't have their financial house. And I found it to be very neat.
Yeah, we do the same. We put a list together. We approach conservation, we call it kitchen table conservation, but sitting down with farm families and putting all of the options out in front of them. And if Maryland Agland Preservation Foundation is the right tool, point them in the direction of Eric Schertz in Moore County and other partners. Or if there are other programs that we don't, our goal is to help people get into preservation. So it's, we can get you follow-up if you want that directly. All right.
Could you get all of us of that list together?
Sure.
On the comprehensive plan committee, on the Sustainable Agriculture, preservation committee, one of the things we identified was in Pennsylvania, they had to adjust their allowable zoning in the ag area for increased uses that wasn't incompatible. Have you explored that?
You mean like increased commercial uses on farms for farm stands?
Yes.
For farm-based businesses? You know, we did a regional report about 10 years ago recommending a whole series of things that would help agriculture and other resource-based industries. And one of the, I think one of those recommendations was, was in fact to the Maryland Agland Conservation Foundation, other easement holders to allow on-farm businesses a little more flexibility there. But now zoning, I can't remember if we've ever advocated for it, but I understand it's an issue, people bump into it. And agriculture's changing very significantly. I've participated in running the very first operation in the SASSR River in Kent County for the last couple of years. And I bumped up into those regulations myself, mostly around food. We had health department problems trying to do, trying to process our own food and sell it. It's part of the farm stand operation. There's a lot of boundaries there, you know. Some of them were really important, and actually they're probably all important, but they're a little flexibility if you go a long way to supporting agriculture.
I think Commissioner Brumho is alluding to the townships in Pennsylvania trying to accommodate towns community to a certain level where it wasn't necessarily all farm-related activities, including welding shops and agricultural equipment repair shops and wood crafts and farm building, you know, shed, you know, shed built.
Hypoxies.
So, and not that, to, you know, not everyone can support themselves off the farm and only the farm. And so in Pennsylvania, they tried to accommodate towns community and others to allow them to have farm-based businesses in agricultural zone districts. And I think that's.
Well, I acknowledge it's a two-edged sword. You have to be very careful about how you proceed, that it's not a use that is incompatible with the area and you might be opening up a door you very hard to close.
That's a slippery slope that you get involved when you start allowing non-agricultural related businesses in agricultural zones.
But I, I think Mr. Reckon is right that it is changing, agriculture is changing. And I think that needs to be a part of this conversation in exploring what are uses that are compatible that you don't want to make it overly restrictive for the farmer to make a living.
Yeah, well, so if there's specific recommendations, we could consider a list for jobs bill. And I'm not sure if the state, I mean, this is a, mostly a state effort, but.
Yeah, they're incompatible. Yeah, I'll send you these. We're trying to get all of the combined all right now.
We'd be good just to sense of comments, Josh.
I'll go ahead.
I'll send you mine.
Okay. Members of the board in front of us, we have the approval of the minutes for a work session on July 24th, 2012. And entertain a motion to accept those minutes. Motion proposed. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Partly moved and second. Any discussion? Here's done all in favor? Aye. Pose. Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Ms. White, or Ms. Don, or.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the board. I have two request of bills today for you. The first one from the Roads Division in the central area due to a retirement.
Okay. And that is a budget position, I see?
Correct.
And keep, entertain a motion to accept the office services assistant at the landfill due to a transfer.
Oh, sorry, this is the equipment operator. I might have lost my order.
That's okay. We have a motion for approval for the equipment operator to the Roads Division. Second. Any discussion? Hearing that all in favor? Aye. Motion carries.
The second one is the office service assistant in the, at the landfill and it's due to a transfer to the detention center. That's why the position is vacant and it is budgeted.
Okay, super. And we'll entertain a motion on the office services assistant.
Action taken.
We have second, first and second partly moved. Any discussion? Hearing that all in favor? Aye. Your chair, thank you.
Excellent. The agenda proposed road provisions, Mr. Frank.
With me this morning is Mr. Mark Woodhall, who are on the keyboards there. Mark is the Senior Plans Reviewer within Plans Review Branch of Development Services Division. As you know, we are currently working on finding a permanent replacement as chief of Development Services Division. We conducted some interviews last Friday, some more yesterday, and we have one more today. And I'm hopeful that by the close of business today, we'll have a recommendation to forward for approval. That's, that's relevant to this topic because provisions to the road code are significant undertakings. There's a very detailed process that needs to be followed, culminating in a, you know, a public hearing and then culminating in approval by the Board of County Commissioners. And it will be very helpful to have a permanent chief of Development Services Division on board to shepherd that process. But in the, in the interim, I have asked Mark to assist me with this topic. I, it's my understanding that your interest in proposed changes to the road code centers on the topic of developer contributions or off-site road improvements. There are some other proposed tech, proposed changes in this road code, many of which are technical in nature. It had not been my intent to go through every single one of those today. We can certainly do that if you desire, but it was really my intent to focus in on the section of the code that deals with the topic of developer contributions and off-site road improvements. I have in my hand here the current version of the road code and standard specifications, which is dated August 19th of 2008. This is, this is the document that is currently in effect. And what we have electronically, that Mark has up on the screen here and which you were provided, I believe electronically in advance, is a draft of proposed revisions to this road code. Now, I emphasize the word draft because I have not yet approved these changes, but it's been worked by the Development Services Division staff. And what you have before you and what we're going to show on the screen to, for the sake of discussion and to allow the audience to see is, and the red lines are the proposed revisions. So Mark, in the interest of being able to see that, if you can go to a single, you know, just one page and we'll, we'll want to scroll down, of course, to section 3.08, which is the relevant section. Now, at the present time, the, the current version of the road code, again, the one dated August 19th of 2008, really only has one small paragraph that deals with the issue of off-site road improvements. And while we don't have it to show you electronically, I'll, I'll read it to you. And it reads as follows. This is on page 26, paragraph 15. Not in your, not in the changes, but the version you have replaces it with some revised language.
Director Franken, can we have an updated copy with the current version and then with the changes? It's difficult to see what the changes are without seeing what was in there at the beginning.
Well, the, the version that you have is in the track changes. I guess what's missing, but I don't know that it's possible to recreate it, was to, you know, they would have lined out what was being deleted and then in a different color would be what's added. That's not how the staff did it. I'm going to read the relevant chapter. I'll be happy to make you a copy of that. This document's posted on the website for anybody who wants to look at it. If anybody has questions or needs help, they can contact Mark in Development Services Division. But the, the relevant, in my opinion, the relevant section of the current road code reads as follows. Existing roadways shall be reconstructed for a minimum of 100 feet on either side of the point of intersection, parentheses, total distance of 200 feet. Roadways are to be built to current standards for the appropriate road classification. If the road is built to current standards, no road improvements are required. So essentially, what that says is that a developer who is proposing a development, be it residential or commercial, has to upgrade 200 feet of county road, 100 feet to the left, 100 feet to the right of their entrance or where that development ties into a county road. Now, where that, you know, why 100 feet instead of 200 feet or 150 or 300 or 50? I had no idea. That's been in the road code that predates my arrival here, but that's what that says. Now, I, I'm not sure what the thought process was, whether it's an attempt to reconstruct county roads on the developer's dime, 200 feet at a time? I don't know. But that's what, that's what we got on paper. Now, in reality, at least for the last several years, oft, that's kind of been the fallback or the default. But in other cases, you know, for larger, more complex developments that are going to generate significant traffic, there can be a traffic impact study required that would, in theory, identify the impact of the development on the surrounding transportation network. And then there's, I'm going to call it negotiations with that developer to come to an agreement as to what off-site road improvements are needed. So let me fall back and briefly summarize the current situation. On paper, the requirement is upgrade 200 feet of road to the current standards. In reality, it's been use traffic impact studies where they're available and negotiate with the developer to identify and agree on what off-site road improvements are needed. But in light of all the discussion that has occurred in recent months on this topic that has, you know, caused us to go back and look at the road code, and we have come to the conclusion that this single paragraph here on page 26 is inadequate. And so what we are attempting to. we are attempting to do through the proposed revisions is to put in, on paper, and spell out explicitly how the process is, is actually working, or is supposed to be working, and so, that's what we've got here in red, now, it seems to me, the starting point for this discussion is to decide or agree, what, what are we trying to achieve, what is the objective? And that's a policy decision that, you know, the Board of County Commissioners needs to make, and I think the, the proposed objective that, you know, that I would propose to you is that developers ought to be required to make those off-site road improvements that are necessary to mitigate or offset the impact of the additional traffic that will be generated as a result of their development, if you have a different objective, then I think it's important for you to say that, because it seems to me, we need to determine the policy objective first, and then we need to write and design the road code and the procedures in order to achieve that desired policy objective.
I think that's a fair assessment, avoiding what happened on the Racer Strab, and I think it was about five or six million that we can anticipate for the cost for upgrades to that road from the taxpayers, and it's due to the increased traffic from development, I'm concerned that taking out provisions that the improvements, 100 feet on the entrance on either side of the road would be taken out to accommodate negotiations, I completely understood, negotiations with the developer on what improvements could be made, I would say that would be the minimum that could be required, but then, if there's a, an additional cost that the other options would be pursued, with the director of Public Works negotiating that, that that should be the minimum.
We've, we've talked about that, and it doesn't seem possible to me, or it doesn't seem like it's going to be possible, to spell out in a road code every possible scenario and to define things down, you know, to a finite level of detail, to the point where it just becomes a math, you know, a mathematical equation that's going to spit out the required off-site road improvements, that I believe that there is, that all we're going to be able to achieve in the road code is lay out some general guidelines and some processes, and, but every project is, is different, I guess I'm saying that because in some circumstances, the results of the analysis of the impact of the development might, might be that, you know, maybe more than 200 feet of road needs to be upgraded, maybe it needs to be 300 or 500, but, you know, it's not possible to say here and now what that is, that's going to vary from project to project, in, in other cases, it may not be necessary, the road may already be up to standard, and in other cases, it might not be a good idea to upgrade 200 feet of road, I would submit, but, you know, this is what we've got out there, I don't know that it's a good, I, I don't think it's wise to try to upgrade the roads 200 feet at a time, because what you're gonna, the risk you run is that you're going to have a stretch of, you know, road that doesn't meet standard, no shoulders, inadequate pavement with maybe some sight distance issues, and then you're going to come to a 200-foot section that does have shoulders and that is up to standard, and then you're going to go back down to a substandard section, and I think consistency is, is, needs to be a consideration, that to go from substandard to standard to substandard to standard isn't good from a traffic, from a driver perspective, from a traffic safety perspective, and so I, I think there, rather than just put a hard number in there, in my opinion, it's better to leave some flexibility in there and analyze each situation on a case-by-case basis.
Have there been instances where the improvements could have been made on either side of the entrance, 100 feet on both sides, and they have not been?
I'm sure, I don't have a ready example to offer you, Mark, do you?
No, I don't have a ready example either.
Well, I, I do, I, I've run into quite a few.
But the, yeah, there have been situations where the road improvements, the pavement was, could be done, to say, trying to work within a prescriptive right of maintenance, where we don't have right-of-way, has been an issue, where you might not be able to do full shoulder and with, say, a collector road where an old road had actually gotten up to that level, that ADT that, that now changed from a minor to a collector road, but, you know, those we, in the past, were work with getting the best that we could within the limits of what we had, a prescriptive right of maintenance, and that's where it was.
Isn't it the developer's responsibility to get the, the right-of-way, there to bear all costs?
Yes, however, the developer does not have the power of condemnation, so, you know, we're, we're back to the issue that we have discussed multiple times over the last several months, where right now, if the road code really says two things, it says, one, the roadway shall be reconstructed for a total distance of 200 feet, but then there's also the variance provision in there, now, the developer does not have the power of condemnation, and in some cases, in some cases, adjacent property owners support proposed development or are neutral, but in other cases, they oppose the proposed development, in some cases, the developers have been able to go out and acquire the necessary right-of-way to do the off-site road improvements that have been called for, either the 200-foot reconstruction, or in, you know, some cases, other stuff, but in other cases, they have not been able to acquire the right-of-way, and I would submit, that's probably for various reasons, in some cases, maybe they made a low-ball offer, in other cases, that adjacent property owner doesn't, is opposed to the development, doesn't want to see the development proceed, and refuses to sell the right-of-way at any price.
But this is a property rights issue too, because it might also have a huge impact on our property value.
Sure, and, and so I would say, it is that adjacent property owner's right to sell or not sell at any price, but that then leaves the developer in kind of a dilemma, in that the, as I have pointed, we had this conversation multiple times, and as I always point out, you know, there are two extreme ends of the spectrum, in my opinion, neither one of which are attractive, on one end of the spectrum is to give the adjacent property owners essentially veto power over the proposed development if they refuse to sell the right-of-way that's needed to make the off-site road improvements, so, you know, that's a policy decision, the board could decide that it does want to give adjacent property owners that veto power, okay, that's one end of the spectrum, the other extreme end of the spectrum is for the Board of County Commissioners, which does have the ability to condemn land, to use its authority to go out and condemn land, to acquire the necessary right-of-way to allow the developer to make the off-site road improvements, you know, to, fully to standard, and to allow the development to proceed, it's my understanding that's been done at least once in the past, it isn't the recent past, I think that predates my arrival here, but it just seems to me, you know, that the board isn't willing to go to that extreme, and I don't know that I'm prepared to tell you, you need to go to that extreme, but those are the two extreme ends of the spectrum, and then, then there's in the middle, and that's where we, the Department of Public Works, are trying to, trying to live in the middle, and in that middle is to use the authority granted to us by the Board of County Commissioners to issue variances where we think it is, you know, appropriate and safe to do so, and sometimes those variances are because the developer has not been able to acquire that necessary right-of-way, now, are there other things that the developer could do, sure, maybe they just need to, you know, re, change their project to be able to do the off-site road improvements on their land and not have to get right-of-way in the first place, but sometimes that's not possible, and so, in situations like that, that's where the, the staff of the Department of Public Works, you know, works with the developer's engineer, looks at the traffic impact study, and essentially, does the best we can under the circumstances, I think that, I think those are the words that Mark used, you know, to do the best we can, so I am sure that there are examples out there where the road, the county road was not upgraded for 200 feet, and I'm also sure that in some of those cases, that was because the developer couldn't acquire the necessary right-of-way, and so, in the interest of not giving the adjacent property owners veto power, but not requiring the county to go out and condemn the land, we have worked with the developer to negotiate and come to an agreement about what, what can be done under the circumstances, now, there are, there are some, some issues in there that we've, are trying to address in these proposed changes, for example, I'm, I am absolutely confident that in the past, there have been developers who have not made good faith efforts to require the right-of-way, that they've, you know, gone out and made low-ball offers to property owners that then get rejected, and then they come back and they tell us, well, you know, sorry, we, we tried, we offered a guy to buy their property, but they, they didn't agree, well.
You pulled up the, I didn't hear that.
So, we are, so we acknowledge that, you know, there's room for improvement in there, and so, in, in this, some of this red here, we're, we're trying to address that, all right, Mark, if you could scroll down and find the paragraph that talks about developer acquisition of right-of-ways.
Director Plannigan, Legislative Services, when they prepare the bills, they show the, you know, they have.